Good evening, it's now 6:30 and I would like to welcome everybody to the Monday, July 23, Planning Commission meeting. Welcome Commissioners, welcome staff.
Thank you.
We have a fairly light agenda tonight. First item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from staff?
None from staff.
Any changes from Commissioners?
Motion.
Stand for motion.
Motion to approve?
Second. If all, if there are no other changes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed say nay. Motion passes for nothing. Our next item on the agenda is to approve the amendments of the July 9, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes from the meeting?
Motion.
Staff, any changes?
None from staff.
Very good. Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Oh, second that motion?
Very good, with a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. Motion passes for nothing. Our next item is a discussion on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to add provisions for business banner signs. And Miss Dean has indicated that our intern, Emily Roshan, is going to be presenting tonight. Welcome Emily.
Thank you. Banner signs. So, a brief history. So, at the January 22, 2018 All Day Work Session, the City Council discussed the topic of banners for schools. And as part of that discussion, Council considered to expand the sign ordinance to be more flexible for businesses and to be added to the Planning Commission and Economic Development Commission 2018 work plans. Staff has conducted research with the market cities analyzing city code standards for banner signs. As of now, the City of Burnsville allows banner signs under the following circumstances: leasing banners, new businesses, grand opening, schools, legacy events, community events, employment, condos for sales, banners on light poles, and wall-mounted leasing banners in the BNI zoning districts on Interstate 35 West and East, Highway 13, Cliff Road, and County Road 42, which may be on display during construction. Spreadsheets are included in your packets with details about different market cities and what they mention in their city codes about permits and fees, how big signs can be, and how long they can be on display for, and the types of banners that can be on display. A majority of the market cities mention in their city code that banner signs can be on display for occasions such as temporary special promotions, advertising for grand openings, employment hiring, leasing, and other special events. The market cities regulate how long banners can be on display for depending on the event that the permit they apply for allows. For cities such as Coon Rapids and Eagan, they allow multiple banners to be on display at one time under the same permit. Staff recommends that reference to the sign content such as "now hiring" or "new businesses" is removed from the city code. And as an alternative, the, or staff recommends that the language reflects that a business can use a banner for different purposes as they see fit, as long as the banner is affixed to the primary building wall. So, staff has recommended that changes be made to Chapter 30, Signs of the City Code, to add performance criteria related to the maximum size, acceptable placement, location, and the maximum duration for banners within certain districts. And so for planning considerations, we're asking if there's additional research and information needed, should the city keep the code as is, and should changes occur related to the size, location, and duration for business banners.
Thank you, Ms. Roshan. Ms. Dean?
Yep, if I may note, this is sort of the first step in the process. So, tonight we're here for discussion. City staff will also be before the Chamber of Commerce Government Policy Committee, as well as the Economic Development Commission to seek their input as well from a business perspective. But, of course, at this point, we're open to hearing your ideas and your recommendations. Certainly, if there's any questions in more detail you want us to run through, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, and then, Ms. Dean, I understand that one of the commission members that couldn't be here tonight offered some comments. Would you be able to relate those to the rest of the commission?
Yep. So, Erica Henderson, one of our Planning Commission members, is unable to attend tonight. But she did forward an email to staff stating that she would recommend that the city code be kept as is and that no additional information or research was necessary. She felt that the current, or the wording that's proposed is appropriate. However, she'd be happy to hear what other Planning Commissioners had to say.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Orkman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I can address you or Regina, but what is there, one item specifically that's prompting this discussion? Was there an issue, or what has brought this to us? Why are we discussing this?
So, it's my understanding that City Council wanted to be more flexible to businesses, allow more opportunity for businesses to display what they wanted, and essentially give more flexibility.
Okay. I mean, reviewing all this, it seems like we're fairly flexible when we're holding up to a lot of the other market cities. And we're making it more flexible by removing some specific wording, if I'm understanding everything I went over. So, I'm personally not seeing any glaring issues with what's presented this evening, unless somebody wanted to deregulate more, depending on what that was. But I'm comfortable with everything as it is. I don't see anything.
Did you have any questions of staff then? Other questions of staff?
No questions for staff right now.
Okay, other Commissioners?
Ironically, that was my question. But in regards to, I wasn't at the January 2018 meeting, so I was curious how it started. And the only thing was, I noticed we're being even more flexible, the size and everything that we're allowing compared to some. So, it would give businesses an opportunity to actually hopefully set up a little more advertising, set up whatever they need, and give them tools to maybe make some more business.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes, I like the, taking the language out of the ordinance to lighten the burden on the businesses and their signage. I do have a question, historically, why does the city regulate employment signs differently than other signs and banners? And I notice that that is different than what any of the other market cities are doing.
That's a great question. We can certainly do more research to that. You're right, though, it is, it does provide some more flexibility, not only for banners, but I think it talks about metal signs and other types of construction-type material for these employment banners. I think just to be friendly to our current businesses, to give them more options than just the standard. It is very specific, which, from a staff standpoint, we prefer to kind of broaden the language, so it's not so necessarily pigeon-toed. So, a business still has a flexibility, but it's not so prescribed. That's our ultimate goal.
Essentially, it helps eliminate some staff work time, because you're not trying to police how they're doing it so much as this, that they're doing it in a manner that isn't detrimental to the city.
That, and from a staff standpoint, we want to get away from referencing content. So, just allowing a temporary banner gives someone more flexibility and doesn't necessarily regulate what's the wording on the banner.
Sure.
Chair, I mean?
Other, go ahead, Commissioner Jimenez.
The follow-up to that is, just looking at, you know, with that same attitude, it's looking at, could the employment signs section of the ordinance actually be removed, and just combining that with all of the other, I guess, regulations that are in place for every other business?
From a staff standpoint, I, when we were developing the language and just strictly looking at banners, that was, that was a thought that came to mind as well, that it should, you know, potentially just be grouped into one, so that we're not, we just eliminate it. You're allowed an employment signage, and let's not specify what the type of material is. It's, you're just allowed so many square feet of signage.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. If a organization wanted, or was holding, let's say, a weekly or a monthly event, is the possibility there to apply for, say, like, an umbrella permit where you've applied? I guess, can you give me more definition to the quantity per year? Have we established a number as far as how many one entity could apply for? And I apologize if that's in the background, I forgot my screen, so I just have my prints.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing any timeframe in the ordinance.
Emily, do we have the code section highlighted and redlined in the PowerPoint? So, it would be here. Oh, if you can go back.
So, that would be consecutive days.
No more than 60.
But we're not saying how many individual. So, if, let's say, a church did a weekly soup kitchen, and they wanted to put a banner up every Sunday, would they need to, would it be 52 permits? Or could they apply for one blanket for a weekly?
I think, I think, I think it's the language of number one here, Commissioner Orkman. Permit shall be limited in duration to no more than 60 days. This doesn't specify its consecutive or simply days of use. I don't know if that's something that should be looked into, and what the intent to that would be. You know, obviously, if it's 60 days, non-consecutive, and you're just doing it on the weekends, that would cover a year. However, is that the intent of the ordinance?
Mm-hmm. That's something I'd maybe want to dig into a little bit deeper, because I think there is a scenario where they, a group was looking for the, our legacy or yard sign events in the right of way, and this might be a good solution to somebody, not just this specific group, but to anybody that might want to advertise their event outside of using the right-of-way permits with the small corrugated signs.
Okay, other question?
Yeah, and if you notice, the wording of the secondary, additional 30 days, does have the word consecutive in it. But, the initial one, for 60, does it. That might just be a...
I think that's, I think that's different. I don't think that actually talks about weeks. I think it means that you're getting a second permit back-to-back to the first one without a gap in time.
Right.
Right. I mean, that's how I would read it.
I guess, from what I'm understanding, from what he's asking is, you know, is 60 days out of the whole year, or is it?
Right. And I don't think, the language or the grammar in here doesn't really give us that answer, I think. So, I think that staff does need to check that out. Mr. Jimenez?
I may be wrong. I do remember reading something in here that the permitting starts after a 10-day period. Is that correct? That the permitting, there's more flexibility and leniency if the banner or the sign is erected for fewer than 10 days?
You happen to have that code section handy, do you? Commissioner Jimenez?
I will do a...
I mean, I will say that this is a relatively thick chunk of our ordinance.
Right, yes. I'll continue scrolling.
Okay. Why don't we come back when you find it, then? Any other questions, Commissioner? Okay, I have a couple. In the background, it talks about as long as it's fixed to a primary building wall. And can we explain what the rationale behind that part of it is?
Just so that it's clearly marked on the property of the business or the organization, and that it's not blowing in the wind or what have it.
Okay, so some, I've seen some employment signs put on posts out in the front yard, presumably in the front yard of the property, and that would, that actually is not allowed under a current ordinance?
Going to employment signs?
Sure.
See if I can jump to that.
And that would be just on how it's currently worded?
Mm-hmm. You can currently have ground-mounted employment signs, painted wood posts. So, you can currently have ground-mounted employment signs. They may be attached to poles or buildings.
Okay, so is this an inconsistency in what we're doing to the ordinance, by, when we go to eliminate unemployment sign from the ordinance?
If, as redlined right now, it would remove that opportunity.
Okay. So, I guess that might be something else to look at, then, for a little bit more research.
Just to clarify before I move on, so that we would remove pole-mounted and replace it with wall-mounted?
I think it's more that the current direction on the ordinance is to remove employment signs from the, from that section, which then lumps it in with the rest of the banners, which means that option is now eliminated from the, somebody putting up an employment sign, because it's not allowed under the current banner ordinance.
So, we should consider looking at maybe including pole-mounted in there somewhere?
But we're, now we're back to content again, and it's only for employment signs. And I think that's, that's where we're going to run into issues that I think staff needs to look at a little bit more, and where they'd like to see the flexibility, and how they can manage that within our content-neutral ordinance.
I mean, we could still have a section that talks about pole-mounted signs, but we would want to eliminate any reference to, if we're going that direction of no content, we would want to remove that reference. Just a property is allowed to have a 80-square-foot pole-mounted banner 10 feet from the front property line, 20 feet from the side, or whatever that language is.
And I think that the part that's going to come back to us on this is that if we're allowing a sign to be placed in the yard, how are we allowing staff to have the opportunity to make sure that it's actually in the yard, not in the front setback, not in the right-of-way? I mean, I think maybe the reason behind the building mounted is that it's very clearly on the property, then. I mean, that pretty much is the goal of that. So, I think the only situation, I think, just think there's going to be a lot of situations that could come up that we'll have to question ourselves on. Somebody that doesn't have access to the building wall because of a multi-tenant building, you know, what do they do? And I think those are the kinds of things that we'll want to discuss when we get a little more feedback. Next item that I had was actually in the ordinance. And on Section N, 1030-3, Section N, I'm sorry, O, talks about banner standards, and it's pretty specific as to the materials for banners. Is that simply current practice, or is that something that we've researched and we find that's what the banners these days need to be in order to be durable? Where do we leave room for future materials? That kind of stuff. So, really, that's really more my, my comment on that, is that based on how, I mean, there's five items here that are very specific about what the material needs to be.
I believe that was researched by staff years ago before predates me.
Sure.
But, it, it's of, banners of substantial material, so that they don't weather or fray, that they hold up over, over time. The concern was that people would put up banners, and they would fly away or tatter or tear. So, the, what's proposed there is of high quality, and...
And I think the question would be, then, is are there, are there alternate materials that are now available, or is there a way to phrase an item in this section that allows people to propose another material as part of their permit that staff can check? Because I think the goal would be for staff not to have to employ the International Maintenance Code to make somebody remove a sign that is clearly coming apart. I don't think we need have staff policing that kind of stuff. I think their time, that's the whole idea behind this, I think, is to make their time more efficient. Any other questions or comments on this?
Chair, just to follow up.
Commissioner Jimenez?
And so, in the same ordinance that you just cited, 1030-3, it says, under Section O, banner signs standards, and this doesn't really, I guess, get to the point you were making, Commissioner Orkman, about temporary small signage for a church or a weekly event. But the, the language says, "All temporary banner signs allowed within this chapter for more than 10 days shall meet the following design standards." And so, I guess my question to staff is, is there similar language regarding signage that could be, that exists or could be implemented, to answer the question that Commissioner Orkman had?
As far as, if maybe I can, if I can clarify, to kind of carve out more limitations on time, or kind of spell that out so it's more clear?
To allow those.
Well, Commissioner Jimenez, when you first brought this up, I think the implication was that, that a banner sign that was on-site for less than 10 days might be more lenient than a sign that lasts longer. And I think this is strictly a material limitation, I think, here. And I think what we're basically saying with this, and staff can correct me if I'm, if I'm getting it wrong, of course. But this basically says, if the sign is going to be up for more than 10 days, it really has to be high-quality so that it lasts. So, I don't think the whole issue of a short-term sign being unpermitted, I don't think there is such a, such a situation in this ordinance. Any other questions here? Okay, then, I move to, this is a long one, 1030-4, and it's, section, I guess it's under real estate signs, and it's for, no, it's not, it's, the indenting on here, okay, it's, it's under Real Estate Signs 8, it's B, Temporary Property for Lease Signs Shall Be a Wall, comma, Banner Sign Built, Attached to the Building Wall, or a Freestanding Sign. And I thought that the grammar here is confusing at a minimum. And it said, "Temporary Property for Lease Signs Shall Be," and then to be consistent with the rest of the grammar, it should either say, "A Wall Sign, comma, Banner Signs Attached to the Wall," or "Freestanding Signs," or it should say, "Should be Wall Signs." The A should be out, and the word signs should be in, because the word signs follows the other types of signs. So, I just thought there was a little wordsmithing to be done there. And then, yeah, this is a big ordinance, guys. I really should have tagged these, I think, so I could have jumped right to it.
Do you have recycle?
Oh, it obviously goes in the recycle bin when I'm done. After the minutes are adopted. And then I think we go, I think there was one more, and it's just, nope, that was it. I'm sorry, that was it. I shouldn't have held this on for that long. Any other questions or comments for staff regarding signage? Commissioner Orkman?
I just, is what my question, is that clear, what I was trying to get to, Regina?
Not entirely. Are you looking to see, I guess, for more clarification on that 60-day, 30-day cap? Is there other opportunity for different types of uses to allow temporary signs, but that might have different criteria?
I guess what I'm trying to achieve in my question is, if somebody's holding a weekly or semi, bi-monthly event regularly all year, could they come in and get a banner permit, under the understanding that this was going to be ongoing throughout the year, not necessarily consecutively for hiring or grand opening or some very specific event? So, if it was for an ongoing event, would this be applicable to that?
I mean, I think the issue comes when we start to eliminate content. How do we allow for different kinds of content to be equally treated? And how do we accommodate the kinds of events that Commissioner Orkman's talking about? And how do we accommodate the kinds of events that Commissioner Workman's talking about? I think clearly we are moving into a different place with this ordinance. And because of that, I think we should be looking a little bit broader at what the permitting should be, and then trying to make sure that we're not leaving people out.
Yeah, I think that's the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish with this.
Commissioners, anything else? Thank you.
If I could just make one more comment. So a lot of what we talk about for temporary banners is related to our business districts, our industrial districts. You had mentioned potentially like a church having a food shelf or soup kitchen or something. And a lot of times, not all the time, but a lot of times those religious institutions are within our residential zoning districts. So, I mean, we can, we can make, we can create language that talks specifically about in residential districts, uses that have conditional use permits associated with them and spell out language specific to that. Or we can create language that talks about temporary banners and just that could be, cover the entire city. We can certainly play with that language and propose something and have you react to that as well.
Ms. Dean, schools also are in R1. And schools are specifically part of, I think, what was, what generated some of this discussion. So if we're allowing things at a school, which is R1, in my mind, it should be relatively easy or identical to allow something for a religious facility in an R1. But I do think, you know, we do, we have a lot of religious facilities in business districts now too. You know, and I think there, I think maybe that's where some of this is coming from because in a business district, you have a parking lot, you don't have a yard. You know, there may be a little bit of space up at the street, but I think we're trying to, again, we're going to have a lot of different takes on this to review, I think, when staff brings this back to us.
There, I completely agree, and we should review that. And that I'm using another scenario of just what I've seen and where this could be applicable, and they don't do this now. But the thrift store by my house, Chapp.
Chaps.
Chaps, has a line out the door every Sunday for food shelf. That's not in our district, and that's a weekly event. So if they, I mean, I'm just trying to give us an idea of what type of place would want to do that. That might be a good example of a business that would maybe pursue a weekly banner outside of a church or a religious institution. So just to kind of keep things on the ground.
Well, and to use that example, they might already have a sandwich board or other signage that's out front. And would that count? Would they be counting that other signage against the banner and it's a total signage number?
That's a great question. I think we need to take a look at that a little further.
But you understand kind of where I'm coming from, okay.
Yeah, and, you know, I think clearly a banner affixed to a building as presented is a lot more time-consuming to install on a weekly basis than a sandwich board that's put out front. So I do think there's some practical sides of this little factor in as well.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Any other comments, questions, commissioners?
Nothing for me.
Very good. Staff, you have a direction to follow?
I've got a lot of comments, and we'll take this information. And like I had mentioned before, we'll also meet with the Chamber of Commerce as well as the Economic Development Commission at some point in this process. I think at this point, we probably won't come back to at the next meeting. It may be the second meeting in August where we'll come back with more information, another check-in point with you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll be moving on to item number four now, which is a discussion on proposed zoning ordinances amendment to modify provisions for fence materials. Ms. Roshan?
So recently, staff has been encountered with several requests from unique, requests for unique fencing materials such as mesh screening, corrugated metal, and chain link with slats. So staff has, again, conducted research on the market cities for what is allowed fence material in their city codes or other documents regarding fencing. And there are additional spreadsheets that include the fence information from the market cities. Several of the market cities allow fence material that is made of decay-resistant material. Most of the cities mention in their city codes that they allow wood, metal, masonry, chain link, vinyl, and wrought iron type fencing. There are few cities that mention certain regulations that pertain to chain link fences. An example is that the city of Brooklyn Park allows chain link fences in the front yard, but they must have a black, brown, or green vinyl coating. In the past, Burnsville has allowed fence material made of chain link, coated chain link, vinyl, wood, mesh screening, and other combinations. But these materials are not specifically stated in the city code. So staff is proposing adjusting the language in the city code to reflect a flexible, broader, and clear understanding of regulations for fence construction and maintenance. For instance, allowing weather-resistant and decay-resistant finishes on fencing material. Adding language in the city code to include a requirement for the good side or the face side of the fence to face adjoining properties. And allowing mesh netting for screening purposes and prohibiting slats for screening and fences for fencing purposes. And the following slides will be alternative fence material that include pros and cons. So wrought iron, it has a beauty and durability to it. You can be, they are creative and decorative designs. They don't rot, warp, deteriorate, or dry out. And there's a patina that would develop over time. So negative sides would be that climate and location can develop rust spots, and there'd be needed upkeep if the patina is not light. So aluminum, it's not very vulnerable to corrosion. It won't rot, fade. There's minimal damage from water and sunlight over time. It's strong through the harsh weather that we have in Minnesota. It's low maintenance, it's covered, can be covered in power, paint, coating, and it has a sloping ability. Downside is that it's not as strong as steel. Chain link, it's durable and typically maintenance-free. The galvanization allows for long-lasting. Downside is that it's a very utilitarian in appearance. Steel, it's strong, heavy, and long-lasting. You can rack the steel fencing to fit uneven land and galvanize and cover it in power coating to prevent rusting. Vinyl is durable and strong. It doesn't have, you don't have to worry about warping, rotting, or blistering. It can stay standing in harsh weather, and it's available in a variety of styles. It can turn brittle and crack in extreme temperatures. Wood, an attractive option. It's versatile in different designs and styles. Lots of maintenance, rotting, or warping due to excessive moisture and the potential for termites and other pests. Treated wood, for pressure and chemically-treated wood pickets, it can resist both insects and moisture. Fence pickets have a tendency to warp or twist. Slip fence, this fence has both wood and aluminum. The horizontal slip fence would allow for adjustments in the boards, and the aluminum cap could help protect the tops of the picket. Composite is low maintenance, less likely to rot, looks more like wood than vinyl. Downsides would be weather may cause shrinking or expansion, the color may fade and develop mold. Masonry, you would get more total privacy, low maintenance. A downside would be that it's bulkier and would require more labor into putting it up. Bamboo, it's decorative. Downside is that it may rot, and it would need occasional maintenance. Privacy fence, screen netting. And then, privacy slats. So staff has prepared, or prepared draft code changes and is seeking direction to determine if there is support for change to the current ordinance pertaining to fences and screening.
Very good. One clarification here for staff. The product called slip fence, is that a proprietary product? Is that something that's a specific company?
No, that was just one that I had come across on from the Home Depot.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of staff, comments? Commissioner Workman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try to chunk these off into small pieces. We are recommending prohibiting slats on chain link fences. And I also looked up photos of slats on chain link fences. And I personally didn't see an issue with those. I thought there was many designs that actually looked pretty nice. And I think there's probably a safety element to those slats that can exist. If you've got small children, you don't want them sticking their hands out of the fences for whatever reason. I think there's more than just aesthetics surrounding the slats. So, right out of the gate, I'm not crazy about prohibiting slats on chain link. I can stop there if we want to discuss, or I can continue.
I think, I think maybe we might want to hit a couple of those pieces. And I did forget that Commissioner Henderson also had a comment for us for that as well. Ms. Dean, why don't I have you go through that?
Yep. So Erica Henderson, who could not be here tonight, she did have a question regarding the question about slats within chain link, specifically about, there's one example with Pexco Green Chain Link. It has kind of a fake Christmas tree kind of AstroTurf kind of feel to it. She had some suggestions that maybe the wording, maybe that should be changed in regards to if we do allow slats, for example, do we want to exclude certain types of texture of slats? And she also had some comments about mesh netting, which may be another discussion point that maybe the commission wants to bring up. But maybe noting that, maybe we need to define that a little better. So we can, we can talk about that next. But in regards to the chain link, she did have some comments or concerns about that.
Very good. I think actually both of those items are typically used with chain link exclusively. So, you know, I'm wondering if, as we move forward, you know, it's really a discussion about how chain link can be managed. I think the comment that chain, it's actually in the, right in the background with the photos here, that the chain link can have a very utilitarian appearance. I think that comment is quite telling. I think it can be, especially in a galvanized situation, and maybe not so much in a colored situation. Commissioner Workman, how did you, how did you think that maybe could be done a little better? Just eliminating slats as a prohibited item?
I don't think we should prohibit slats.
If I may note, from a, from a staff standpoint, we looked at the information of what we allow and what we don't allow. And it was noted that we specifically call out slats within chain link to be prohibited when used as screening, like rooftop screening of mechanical equipment. And the thought historically was that over time, they look fine, you know, when they're put up, but over time, they break, they're difficult to maintain. And I think that's been the greatest concern of staff historically, that it's just a, they look fine to begin with, but it's just a maintenance nightmare in the end, and looks bad.
So could we address that issue in the property maintenance code rather than what we're discussing here? That if the slats do deteriorate, then you are subject to property maintenance violation?
I think we could. I think obviously we can offer that to staff. I think the main issues with that would be how many slats are broken before you, I mean, and quite honestly, they are typically a fairly light-duty product, in my opinion. And I have seen slide fences that are horribly non-maintained. I think we all have. And I think the question becomes, at what point do we make it a staff concern to administer that on the backside? And I guess, I think the point that Ms. Dean made was that if you're using, if you're trying to use it on a roof, that's really not consistent with other elements of our, of our code. So eliminating it there and allowing it elsewhere, I think some of those same issues come into play. A chain link fence on a roof is probably not an appropriate location for it. And Regina, these, Emily, these are citywide. These are zoning-wide. I mean, this is not, this is not specific to residential, this is not specific to business uses. This is truly a citywide discussion at this point. And again, I think now we have to think about it that way too. Is if we're eliminating it in one spot or allowing it in one spot, what does that mean elsewhere?
Well, and if it already exists now, and we're saying it's no longer allowed, are we going to run around and ask people to take the slats out of their chain link fence?
It would be considered non-conforming. So from basically, let's say an ordinance was passed next month, from that point forward, anything new, if someone came to us and asked, "Is this permitted?", the response would be, "No, it's prohibited by code."
And repairs are allowed by code?
They are.
For anything grandfathered in. Maintenance code does come back into play again because now the Enforcement Division of the Building Department is trying to take care of managing issues like this.
I think, I mean, we're obviously not making any decisions tonight, but I'd like to hear from somebody in the industry, if possible, just to get a better perspective on that. I'm just really weary about outright banning slats because it's not if, but when somebody's going to want to do that, and we're going to be up here talking about undoing that.
Well, I think another issue too, if I may, Commissioner Workman, is if somebody who sees an existing site that already has slats comes in, doesn't understand they're supposed to get a permit for some of the fence work, has the work done, and now all of a sudden they have a non-complying fence. I think the, the public understanding that this is a rule now, I think, comes into play as well. Personally, from my opinion, I don't like the look of slats. I think there are other uses, or there are other fence materials that are higher quality. I think you guys know me, I think, well, I think Vince knows me. I do push for higher-quality products. However, that is a cost to our, to our homeowners and our landowners, our building owners, and I'm conscious of that. I think a more durable product is a long-term benefit, even if the initial investment is a little higher. And I think that encouraging the more durable products is what our ordinance should do. I don't think it has to exclude slats, but I do think if we find a way to write the ordinance to encourage more durable materials, I think we would be, long-term, a better goal. Commissioner Roberts?
Just kind of piggybacking on that, one of the big problems with that too is the user application error. If you've ever seen these fences that are put in by a homeowner who is a DIY weekend guy, a lot of times when you get down to that middle of the fence and you're getting kind of tired, you start skipping the actual application that's supposed to be done, and it starts getting put in kind of fifty percent, thirty percent, you know, that type of thing. And then later on, they figure out that it really doesn't work. And then there's the other thing of, I know a certain place in Burnsville who, they didn't want to spend their money on a decent fence. They didn't put in slats, they do have chain link. So they basically bought some meshing and a bunch of zip ties, and it looks horrible. But aesthetically, they could care less. It was just that they wanted to go a different route. And I don't know if we have rules on this. The one person's gold is another man's garbage, you know?
Commissioner Trimmer?
Yes, I'd like to comment on the slats, and then I have some other comments on other areas of the ordinance as well. I'd like to see this broken out in zoning districts a little bit more. I'd like to see the slats removed from any residential districts. And I'd like to see the slats as a conditional use permit in other areas. I think that the look of them... I, I think that the look of them, as described by staff is is not ideal in a residential area, but I do think that there's, there's uses for them in certain screening situations. And in fact, I think just recently, it, it was approved for a, a property that came in front of the planning commission to help screen their overflow parking of their new, their new car lot. So, I, I think there are some, some uses, but I, I would prefer to see them outside of the residential districts.
That was, I'm not trying to, that, that was mesh, wasn't it?
Well, and I was going to go to that next, I think. I think we can.
Recently Dodge of Burnsville did propose to use the slats.
Oh, was that?
Mm-hmm. And then an apartment building proposed to do mesh around their balconies.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah.
And that mesh was very nice.
And that's, I think, why don't we move on to the mesh then? Because I, I do, and you guys can come in here. I think basically the other fence materials that are out there, that were presented to us, I don't know that there's anyone with any objection to, you know, the composite, the wood, the wrought iron, the aluminum, the steel. I mean, essentially, those are all more quality products and typically installed by professionals. And as such, the, the workmanship is usually at a fairly high standard. So, I think the other one that, that we probably would want to come up with, we would want to review is, is the mesh issue. And I think that Commissioner Henderson had a, a comment on that too.
I can just read verbatim. Does approved mesh netting need to be defined or define the appropriate uses? She says, I don't know how many options there are for this material, maybe, you know, bringing in an expert may be helpful for discussion. I added that commentary there. And she also mentioned, does mesh netting include the material that looks like fake leaves? Which come on a roll and are rolled out and fastened to chain links or something like with a pattern or?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I think we're, we're delving into area here where a do-it-yourselfer could actually go to Menards and buy some dollar a foot AstroTurf, install grommets and call it a mesh. That fits her situation. Is it realistic? I don't know. How will we manage it? And I think her comment about the the netting, the, the approved nettings need to be defined or define it as an appropriate use. The comment about different options, I, I do think that, you know, we could probably do, have staff do a quick Google search as opposed to bringing an expert in on, on the material just to see what is available. But I don't think that's going to be in a, you know, an, an over, it's not going to have an overarching grasp on what might be available out there. I, I think what it comes back to, I think, is can we offer staff the ability to through the D R C or even through permitting, analyze a product and decide that it's appropriate for the use. I think that's really what a lot of this is coming down to. If, if the product is appropriate for the use and it, and it looks good, which is a subjective comment, highly subjective, why should we see it? Why shouldn't it be simply something that's handled administratively? And I, I think that always the D R C and staff has the opportunity to tell a, an applicant, this doesn't work. We can't see how this exactly fits the rules. We really need you to present it to our higher bodies for review.
So, if someone wanted to propose tires, a row of tires as their fence, and staff said, no, it's not fencing, approved fencing material per, you know, traditional application or whatever the code language says, they can apply for a conditional use permit and present in front of you. Or maybe the option is present in front of the development review committee, which is a staff body made up of various city departments. And they may say, maybe yes, maybe no.
And that's kind of where I'm going with this, is I don't want to have an item on an agenda for a C U P for slats on a chain link fence. I don't think somebody should have to go through that process for slats on a chain link fence. And that's kind of where this is rooted at, because I, again, I can't predict the future, but it just seems like an inevitable thing that somebody's going to have enough time, energy and money to do. And we're going to be up here reviewing a chain link fence if we outright prohibit that. So, I think we just need to discuss it more.
Well, Commissioner Workman, as Chair, I'll offer the devil's advocate at sight. How do we determine which slats are aesthetically pleasing or appropriate versus the ones that are not?
I'd just say commercial grade slats. You know, you can't go buy or make your own in your basement, or maybe you can. But I mean, it would be something as simple as going to Home Depot and finding it, something commercially produced.
But there again, we're, we're relying on something that is commercially available retail versus something that is commercially available jobber to the industry for installation. And I would submit that there are times where that's going to be the same and times where it's not. So, how do we, how do we give staff the ability to differentiate between them and say yes to one and no to the other, if that's appropriate?
This might be an ignorant question, but do you need a permit to put up a fence in residential?
If it's seven feet or under, no.
So, if I wanted to put up a chain link fence in my yard, I could just do that without coming to City Hall?
You could. There are specific location requirements. For example, if it's in the front yard, there's maximum height, some sight vision. If you want to go, in most areas of the perimeter of your yard, traditionally, it would be six feet as you get in. It can go up to seven feet. Anything over seven feet triggers a building permit. You also have to provide engineered drawings for that. Anything over eight feet in a residential situation would be a conditional use permit request. It would be like a special purpose fencing.
So, there's not really an opportunity here to have that discussion with somebody who is going to build a chain link fence anyways?
True. Unless they want to put slats in it.
Well, even still.
But there's no permitting, there's no, there's no city, there's no city overview that it would allow that outside of after the fact.
Right.
Right. How we would become aware would be if someone were to complain and then we would see, okay, what are they?
Right. So, you know, we, I think we are, we are creating a problem both for our residents and for our staff. If that element is added without caveats or without distinction. And I think the, the zoning district might be the, might be part of it that could give us that. However, my opinion would be that an industrial site would be more likely to be one that would benefit from the slats as opposed to a residential neighborhood. Quite honestly, I think that with the, any other commissioners with a comment here? Okay, I, I think that the introduction of the screen netting mesh, the screen mesh actually creates a different dynamic here. I think clearly, as Commissioner Roberts pointed out, trying to install the slats in a large yard or even a modest yard fence is a time-consuming tedious task. I think that because we're allowing, or presumably will be allowing this, this netting, it's pretty clear that someone could install that relatively quickly. I think the issue of the fastening mechanism, Commissioner Roberts pointed out, i- is a function. I, I don't know if that, if we need to look at that as an issue, but yet I could see a zip tie being used appropriately as long as it's installed appropriately. Clip it, write color, I mean, there's all kinds of things here that factor into it. But there again, how are we leaving this with staff when it comes in to be installed to, to manage that? And if it's not done right, what's the recourse? You know, we're, we're, we're starting to look at some pretty fine detail on this stuff, I think. So, I mean, the question here then, staff is looking for some feedback regarding, oh, pardon me. I guess we're, there is a couple of other items here too. Does anybody really have any comment regarding the good side of the fence issue?
No.
No.
Okay. And then, so I think that, I think we're pretty much in support of, of having the good side to be shown to the public, which I think is a, a fairly consistent theme for the market cities that responded. We don't really talk about placement on the yard outside of it needs to be totally on the yard. I thought that there was a one foot inside the property line requirement, but there's nothing specific to that.
There's not. In fact, I did have the opportunity to review the language briefly with our code enforcement. And they had some concerns with the language that's under ten, seven, nineteen B about locations.
Yep.
Location.
I had that highlighted.
Specifically, getting the permission from the neighboring property owner to the city may require the owner of the property with an existing fence to establish the boundary lines of his property by survey. Let's see here, before that, I should have read from the beginning. Fences shall be located entirely upon private property of the person constructing the fence unless the property owner adjoining agrees in writing that such fence may be erected on the division line of the respective properties. The main issue with that, it's not a recorded document, neighbors change over time. Is this something that the city's monitoring that's really private property to property question or concern? From a staff standpoint, we just want to make sure that it's on one's property. As far as establishing whose property is whose, we don't want to get involved in that. So, even though it's not redlined, that's something that if this comes back to an ordinance form, we'd like to take a look at this language and propose something different.
Thank you. And I, I agree, I guess, having worked in the industry for a long time, even a couple of weeks ago, I have a building survey that I'm reviewing for a new home and the fence meanders from one side of the property line across the property line to the other side of the property line simply because the person who installed it didn't really know where the property corners were. I, I find it interesting that our ordinance only requires the survey. The, the city may require the owner of a property with an existing fence to establish the boundary lines of his property by a survey. So, that's, that apparently would be there for an after the fact confirmation that the, that the fence is on the right property.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah. And I, I find that odd that it would be only after the fact now. Do we want to require somebody to get a survey to put a fence up? I don't think so. But yet, it certainly is a solution that elimi- that eliminates some of the problems. I think most of the ci- the city here now is old enough where the monuments, the actual lot corners are not as visible or accessible as they were in a, in a younger area. And I think that finding them is always a chore, but it's still the only way to be sure that you're doing the right thing. Presumably, most of these fences, well, not most, presumably, a lot of these fences are going to be installed by professionals. I, I would, I would, I would submit that most of the fence installations in the city are done by professionals versus do-it-yourselfers. I, I think that if you were to, more than fifty percent.
I would say higher than that probably.
Yeah, right, but I'll, I'll go there because I think I'm fairly safe with it.
I don't have the data on that, I don't know.
But the thing would be is, you know, how are they determining where the lot line is?
Is the Dakota County G I S something that a lot of people rely on in your issues?
If, from, from a staff standpoint, I can maybe help answer that. We receive phone calls from a number of residents daily. Fences are probably one of the top questions we get in planning or even our building department. And as a staff, we let them know that we may have a certificate of survey on file with our building department depending on the age of the home and what that would show is the proposed location of the house prior to construction, the boundary, or the, the property lines and any drainage and utility easements that might be on the property. And then we also refer the caller or person emailing to Dakota County G I S. We let them know that, that, that's a guide for reference. They're not a hundred percent accurate, but they can, you know, use them again as a reference. But then we also know to know exactly where those property lines are, are out on your property that you need to hire a surveyor privately, that we don't as a city provide that service. So, that's kind of the, the spiel that we provide, the customer service that we provide to callers, a general response.
Well, you would hope that most neighbors would talk to each other. I mean, if I was going to put up a next, a, a fence, I would probably go talk to Doug first and just let him know that I was doing that.
I, I would agree, but I would also think that it's pretty obvious by some of the people that have come in here that maybe that doesn't happen as much as it should. Commissioner Chamberlain?
I have a question, Ms. Dean. In a residential setting, how many people actually pay for a survey to put up a fence? And that's a, a pretty extreme cost for putting up a fence on a property line.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have specific data. My guess is probably not a lot unless there has been a known neighbor-to-neighbor dispute. There, I should note, when, when people do call us or question, I often mention that if they're just concerned with one property line, that they could just have one property line surveyed. They don't have to have their entire property surveyed, so sometimes that helps out when they're thinking about costs. People can always rent a metal detector too to try to find the pins.
If you find the monuments, you're good.
That's another option.
I, I, I would let you know a couple of things here. I think that perhaps might have been where that one foot inside the property line, a rule of thumb, for lack of a better way of calling it, may have come into place to be safe. I know that my own fence I didn't install, it was installed by a previous owner. When I, when I sight to where I believe the lines are based on the hydrant, which is supposed to be on the property line, by the light pole, which is supposed to be on the property line, by the other utilities, the transformer, I can see that it appears that my fence is somewhat inside where I believe my line's to be. But I'm in that exact situation. I don't know for sure. I don't know if it's on there. One other thing is, we just finished a project, we're just working in a project in Chocopee and one of the landowners came in and put the fence in while the property was ongoing. We presumed they were able to find the monuments, but yet he still managed to get part of this fence on his neighbor's yard. So, you know, I, I do think that this is a, an element of being a city that, as Ms. Dean mentioned, is probably a, a very high level of communication with the public. And what we're doing here will hurt or, or help that.
If I could follow up?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and the reason I, I ask that is because I, I think it's good to advise residents on, you know, best practices, most lawful practices. But I think the due diligence on the property owner and certainly on the, the contractor who's erecting the fence i- is important too. But I liked what you were saying, Ms. Dean, is that the, the ordinance could be changed to, to make it a little more clear on, on that due diligence on being within your own property line. Because when you look at the language in clause O in that same ordinance, I'm sorry, D, it talks about the, the condition of the fence remaining in good repair and that if it does become, if it goes into disrepair or causes a danger or nuisance, that the fence needs to be fixed, it needs to be repaired. If that fence meanders and crosses property lines, or even if there's a written agreement with the neighbor, that's now putting the burden on that other neighbor to repair the fence that they hadn't even erected. And, and so I think some, some clarification in that language might be helpful too.
Well, I, I, I think perhaps it even opens a different can of worms because if there's issues between the neighbors and the fences, even in one foot off the property line, how are you getting to the other side of the fence to maintain it?
Good point.
I mean, I mean, this, this is, this is a property rights issue for residential homes. And I think it, it is one of the more difficult areas for the city to administer. Simplifying it for staff as, as best we can, I think it should be our goal. Commissioners, any other comments currently? Commissioner Workman?
I've got, I want to jump over to wood fences quickly. Wood fence shall be painted or stained. I believe it was in the narrative. Mr. Roshan, can you go back to your slide on wood fences for me quick? That doesn't look stained. To me, maybe it is. But I, again, I don't mean to be a broken record here, but I don't see the need to put a requirement that we force homeowners to paint or stain a wood but I don't see the need to put a requirement that we, um, force homeowners to paint or stain a wood fence.
Commissioners, what other comment?
I think natural wood looks just fine. And as that ages in the sun, it, it doesn't.
Well, it actually depends on the wood. If you put up a redwood, say you put up a cedar fence, those are gonna have a lot more longevity without anything on them. They're resistant to rot, they're resistant to certain insects, things like that. If you put up a simple, really inexpensive pine fence from Wood at Home Depot per se, um, those are, you don't do anything to it. You, within the first rain, half of that fence is gonna be bending certain ways and you're gonna see your, um, spacing start to get a little larger. Everything is just gonna go bad on it because the wood that goes in there, or the water that gets in there is gonna, um, contract and expand throughout the whole seasons that we have. And not only aesthetically, but just from a longevity standpoint, anyone that puts in a fence like that is gonna end up replacing it within a year. Um, you've got experience on this.
I was, yeah.
Here we go again.
Well, I think the red line, I think the red line might cover this. So instead of, okay, and basically the red line says, under construction, under ten nineteen seven, ten seven nineteen, under C, construction, fences shall be constructed in a workmanlike manner and of materials. This is the red line. Of material reasonably suited for their intended purposes. Um, I would offer that a untreated wood fence, uh, under the International Maintenance Code, would be required to be finished with a stain or a paint. However, a treated wood fence, a fence that is purchased out of, using treated material, would already be treated. And I would also suggest that there are woods out there, um, that are, would not require paint or stain, um, simply because of the product. Um, the other thing is, is the paint or stain being applied in order to take care of weathering? Is weathering a desirable characteristic or is it not a desirable characteristic? That's a personal, uh, opinion, I think, in a lot of cases. Um, uh, but I, I think that the redlining is helping us here by saying of material reasonably suited for their intended purposes. Um, fences shall be constructed of a durable and permanent material suitable for outdoor construction. Um, all exterior wood of any fence other than, other than decay-resistant woods shall be protected from the elements by paint stain or other protective surface. So perhaps that caveat will help us take care of that issue.
Does that narrow us down to, say, pine? Or what was the wood type you said that was most?
Well, a simple pine is not conducive to our.
As opposed to a cedar where you would have to stain that every year to maintain? I mean, it's more durable wood, correct?
The cedar's more durable?
Is it?
Yes. Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's in the sense of, uh, when you look at different aspects of it, um, from insects, things like that, from rot, um, I still would suggest that you stain and do something to your, whatever wood you use. Unless you're bringing in something pretty exotic, which we don't use here in Minnesota too much. Well, to offer, you know, company, uh, industry information here, um, a pine board that would be untreated would typically be a construction lumber. And you're basically talking pallet type material. That is not a product that I would normally expect would be allowed in an exterior situation. However, there are heat-treated pines now that are out there that are actually as durable as cedars and other things. Uh, what I'm getting at is, again, I think materials are, are, I think we have to let the language of the ordinance address it by the durable and permanent material suitable for outdoor construction. And I think that comes down to staff and that gives them that, that tool to pick up a product that is not appropriate for outside and to flag it as a, as an error.
But is that subjective to opinion? And that, and I'm just gonna throw this in here because this is my last point on this regarding peeling and flaking of the fence. So is that your opinion of peeling and flaking or a durable wood might be different than my opinion? I mean, and that's what I'm, the, the root of all of this is I don't want somebody to get an ordinance violation because they did not paint their fence.
I, I, I don't disagree with the Commissioner's argument, um, Steph. I mean, how, essentially, anything that would come back to staff on this would be a neighbor complaint.
Right. So, um, it typically would be, we would be advised typically, typically by a neighbor complaint. Um, we would then review the code, um, review the violation, review the code, are they, or are they not in violation? If something's kind of questionable, um, staff would likely take that to our DRC. Do you concur with the planning? Um, or maybe it's our city attorney, depending on what the issue is. Um, and either one, it would be an appeal of our, the city planners', um, recommendation, or we may direct someone to apply for a conditional use permit as a special purpose fence. Um, then it would be before planning commission. So it might, it could take a couple of different routes. Um, but our goal is to allow, to not be so prescriptive and allow as many types of materials.
And, and I don't mean to damper that down because I know that's, that we're, that is what we are trying to accomplish here is to open this up. I just, I keep going back to, um, the violation of the ordinance because I feel like that's where there's the most potential for, um, controversy. And, and so I, I understand where we're going with the paint and the stain. Um, I, and my concerns, I think, have been aired on that. And the peeling and flaking of the paint that has been applied to the fence, um, was my last piece. And when we're looking at that, are we talking about a percentage of the fence? Are we talking about a square footage of the fence? Or are we talking about the obvious? You know, the whole fence isn't bad. I mean, it's either it is or it isn't. Or is that subjective to interpretation from different individuals as well?
Um, I mean, it, it's not quantified, so I think it is, you know, subjective. But I think, um, our code enforcement, who would likely be the ones looking at this, take a common sense approach. Um, and, you know, work with whether our property owners, whether it's residential or business. Um, you know, if it's the whole thing, yeah, they're gonna, you know, write them up. But if it's a little bit, they may just, you know, offer a, you know, might wanna paint that. Um, and it's, you know, corrected in a, less than a weekend, um, and it's not a big deal.
If I may, uh, does, does this language on peeling and flaking, is that similar or identical to what's in the International Maintenance Code for other parts of a building, specifically a residential building?
Um.
Or could that be looked at?
Yeah, we can take a look at that and, and maybe bring the specific language that, um, the Property Maintenance Code, um, spells out.
I think if those two are in agreement, it creates less problem for staff. Mr. Roberts?
I just wanna go back. What I do like about this wording, um, in regards to the, the wood, is it kind of puts an umbrella, blanket of hope that anybody looking to put up a fence that would take the diligence to read up what the city codes are or what they could and cannot do, might ask, as a DIY person per se, if they don't know what they're doing, might ask somebody, what do they mean by this? And then they say, no, don't put this type of wood up, go with this type of wood. And we hope that our residents would then go with something a little more, you know, maintenance free if they wanna do it in that sense, rather than going the really, really opposite way.
I think, I think another side of this too is whatever we're doing here in terms of this ordinance, staff will be producing a brochure for the public, for our residents, that, that's here, but is also available on our city website. And I think that most of us would agree that, that the current direction of our residents would be somebody to go look on the website. If they're gonna, if they're thinking about building a fence and it isn't something that was just brought to them by somebody selling a fence and they decided to buy it. If they're looking, actively looking at building a fence, you would think that most people would go on our website and see what the city has to say about it. Um, I would hope people would do that. I would hope that they're comfortable enough with the website, that that is something that would be a goal of theirs. Um, and obviously, the more of this information that we can get out there for them, the, the better we're gonna, gonna be with that. Uh, anybody else with comments?
I have a question. A question, yes. Um, so just for my own education, you're talking about the International Maintenance Code, and I'm wondering if that's something that the, that the city has adopted as formal guidance? And as a follow-up, you asked, does the language on, on chipping align with that? Um, and, and so the question I had, would that also, um, talk to the types of wood that could be used and?
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Chairman, I guess about a year ago, or possibly a little more, the International Maintenance Code was brought before us and was approved by the Planning Commission and the Council, and it is now codified in the, in the city's ordinances. Um, it, it is very similar to the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, uh, the National Fire Code, the International, uh, Gas Piping Code. I mean, literally, there's a lot of, uh, codes that are all produced by ICC International Code Council and that have been adopted in some fashion in the state or here in the city. And that is one that we do use. Uh, I think at the time, it was used to try to put a, an umbrella, to put, to bring all of the maintenance coding into one, um, area of our ordinances and to, to simplify the interpretation and the enforcement of it. And I, I think that's why whenever we can take the language from the International Mechanical, or International Maintenance Code and make it part of our ordinances here, we're gonna be in a better place.
Good. I, I think that's important to know and important to share too, just because, um, it, it does demonstrate that staff are not making, um, they're not making judgment calls. They're, they're using some type of guidance in these situations, which helps create fairness, and I think that's, that's good to keep in mind.
I'll be sure to bring that specific language back, or Emily?
Any other comments?
That's all I have.
I still have a couple here. Um, under construction, I think it's more of a, I think we're back to grammar a little bit here. Um, under construction, um, fences is plural, but material is singular. And I think that under a number of the photos, there are multiple materials. So I just thought that materials should be plural in C and then in two. And I, I would suggest that we would probably want to just review the appropriate grammar all the way through just to make it a little bit easier again, so that if somebody doesn't read this and, you know, well, you can't have more than one material 'cause it's not plural. And that was it. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, no, we already talked about locations and there really wasn't anything more that we could really do at this point. Although, again, the brochure probably, uh, could, um, be reminding people of the need to make sure that this fences are on their own property if it doesn't already.
If I may, now, we all, um, I, I always recommend that people avoid any drainage and utility easement. Um, not all properties have drainage and utility easements. Um, I, many do have a standard five foot along the sides. Um, some have greater easements, but, um, the reason why we do that, um, recommend against placing it within that area is it's possible that utilities could come through. Um, let's say the gas company, if there's a gas line running through and they could remove the fence and it's at the homeowner's expense, um, often to replace. Um, so it's a kind of a word of caution that we, you know, throw out, a policy recommendation, um, but just another thing to note.
And that reminder should, should also be in the brochure if it's not already there because that, that is very true. Any construction in those easements is subject to removal, uh, for need. Um, very good. Steph, you have, uh, direction that you're comfortable with?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Uh, that brings us to our next item on the agenda then, which is updates. And Ms. Dean, I see that you're.
Yes.
Having the new agenda.
The next planning commission meeting is Monday, August thirteenth. I'll go ahead and pass the draft. There's, I believe, three items on that agenda. Um, also, the Burnsville Center County Road Forty-two Study Work Session is, um, on Monday, July thirtieth here at City Hall, uh, beginning at six thirty PM. Um, so if you're able to attend, please do. Um, it's kind of our kickoff meeting, um, looking for a stakeholder engagement from all of our, our, our Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, and Parks and Natural Resources Commission. Um, as well as throughout the entire process, we're seeking, um, other feedback from business owners, the chamber, um, county, state, um, other, you know, stakeholders. Um, and so hopefully, this will be a, a great process and we'd love for you to be involved as much as you can.
Yeah, obviously, important subject here.
Correct.
Very good. And then that brings us to, uh, our adjournment, unless there are any other comments or, or anything from our, our commission. I would stand for a motion.
I'm on.
Second.
Second, very good. And with all those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries. Uh, very good. Everybody have a nice evening. Uh, drive careful and we'll see you next time. Thank you.